You may be, you may recall that this has been on and off of our agenda for the past several months. And so it is therefore under oath. This will be the first item we take up. This is the site plan for Global Vision Bible Incorporated consisting of map seventy-three, parcel seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight point oh one and seventy-eight point oh two, being developed as one property. The applicant has submitted revised site plan, a revised site plan that addresses setback issues and drainage issues that were concerns of the planning commission and our stormwater engineering department when they first appeared before you with a revised site plan or with a site plan submittal in November of twenty twenty-three. The setback issue has not been remedied in full in that the tent on the northern property line, or the tent is a little close to the northern property line. The neighboring property that the setback issue encroaches on however, is also owned by the church. State law and case law allows churches a wide berth regarding lot size and related criteria such as building setback requirements. The remaining setback encroachment is upon themselves as opposed to neighboring properties not owned by the church. They did have, when they first appeared before us, they had some buildings that they put on in the course of their development of the property, that they established on the property such as two school-type portable buildings and a bathroom facility, temporary bathroom facility that were too close to the road in each case. This approved, or this not approved, this revised site plan does move or propose to relocate those structures behind the required setback lines from the road. So the one remaining setback that is still afoot has to do with the tent. In discussion with the church, and I'll let them speak to this, or their representative speak to this. They're still of the opinion that it may still be considered a temporary structure. That being said, we don't have any referential structures in our ordinance. So typically it would have to be setbacks outside of case law instead of church would necessarily have to meet all the detailed criterion of development with regard to lot size, setback and bulk issues. So that all being said, the remaining setback encroachment is for the tent itself and the surrounding, I think, sound buffering wall that they've, at least for their reports, that they've established around it. And that, and the encroachments to the property line and across property lines are really internal and on themselves, not neighboring properties that are owned by others. The setback encroachment remaining also is not in relation to any setback from public roads. With progress made on addressing planning commission concerns and stormwater engineering concerns, staff can recommend approval. Some other details about this revised submittal, and I'll let them correct me if I say something in error, they being the applicant when they have their opportunity to speak. But it's my understanding that they are right at, historically they've had more or less unlimited curb cut down Chandler Road and across portions of Old Lebanon Dirt Road. This proposal proposes to have all of their parking access off of Chandler Road by specific points of access. And they're staying away from Old Lebanon Dirt Road. In part, they're doing that because Old Lebanon Dirt Road itself is incorporated into the city of Mount Juliet and in discussion with the city of Mount Juliet. The city of Mount Juliet asked if they try to stay away from that area since they're in the middle of a pending widening project on Old Lebanon Dirt Road. So as a result of that, the engineers, in addition to dealing with our comments, have made efforts to try to move structures back, move drainage facilities they were proposing back from that proposed right-of-way improvement on Old Lebanon Dirt Road. They are proposing an detention pond here in this corner. They're proposing an detention pond here. And I believe they may have another one, having trouble seeing it up in this vicinity. The drainage from the property largely flows from around this corner to this direction across the property. And so having the detention ponds at the lower ends of the property makes sense so that they're catching any projected runoff and detaining it on the property so that, so that they're not increasing what runoff would have occurred had this development not occurred. One of the things that delayed us was, if I understand it correctly, and I'll let my engineers representative speak here in a moment from the county, was that we wanted them to provide us calculations that assumed pre-development standards, given that they have done quite a bit of work with regard to building out parking area and activities without permits to date and without stormwater review and oversight. So they wanted them to assume kind of a pre-development posture with regard to their starting point when they were making their calculations in terms of projected increase of runoff. We didn't just want it to be handling the runoff from what's there now. We wanted to kind of take pre-development standards as best we could. So that took them some time to compile those calculations, get that to our county engineering representatives and have them review and satisfy their concerns.
But we're to that point now?
We're to that point.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir. I'll walk away and respond if I need to.
I'm here to represent the church today. Please come forward, thank you, now for the record. Please, please, sir.
I'm Pastor Jesse Jones and I'm an associate pastor at Global Vision. If I could, I'll open this in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time. Father, I pray that you bless us with your presence here. Father, I pray that you just make this a peaceful place, make this a place for you, Lord. We ask that you just get me out of the way and you use me as a mouthpiece for what you want done. We love you, we praise you, and we worship you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. I'm Jesse Jones, Associate Pastor at Global Vision Bible Church. I'm here today seeking your approval for the site plans, including the modifications suggested by the staff. As we discussed in our previous meeting, I strongly believe that approving these site plans would be in the best interest of all parties involved. Our team is committed to cooperating and collaborating with all stakeholders in this matter. We simply seek a fair opportunity to pursue this project just like any other organization would. We are grateful for your willingness to listen to our proposal and kindly ask for your consideration. Thank you for your time and attention. May God bless your deliberations.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll open up for public comment. We do ask that you keep your comments brief and make them not repetitive in nature and not to speak any longer than three minutes. We've got a lot of people here in many cases. And we want to try to get through this out of respect for y'all's families. So do we have anyone wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir. If you would come forward, state your name and the record.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Barry Floyd. I live diagonally across from Global Vision. And currently, much of their stormwater falls, flows down my driveway. I'm a retired professional engineer, civil engineer, having done similar work in the past. Some of my concerns, Mr. Brooks Shears has already addressed somewhat. I'm concerned that two of the detention ponds may still be within the proposed right-of-way for the Old Lebanon Dirt Road project. And I encourage you to coordinate with the city of Mount Juliet and make sure whatever work is done is not impacted in the future so that we do this once and we don't have to redo it in the future. Two, the pre-development conditions concern me. As has been said before, this was a grass wooded area before. Now there's a lot of impervious area, so that definitely needs to be taken into account. Next, it appears from a periphery review of this, a lot of the runoff will still go unchecked onto Chandler Road. With the many entrances they had, unless the stormwater is captured and collected using trench drains or something similar, the water is still going to run off the side on the Chandler Road, then down to Old Lebanon Dirt Road and continue washing out my driveway. Finally, I would encourage the committee to say, to put some time limits on this work. If approved, it should be started within X number of days and completed within X number of days. Based on their past performance, they can drag this out forever. So I would encourage you to think about some time restrictions on this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Tom, do you want to speak into that?
No, I will. At some point, you may want to hear from our engineer about the overall drainage package they've submitted and how they are handling their drainage from the perspective of our, our side of the table, the engineer from the county's perspective. With regard to timeline, I think that is probably a reasonable request. One caution about that is I am aware that the state of Tennessee and several state agencies also have issues that they're trying to work through with the church. That, that one caveat, if you do decide to choose a timeline within which this work needs to occur, which again, I think is probably reasonable to consider, there needs to be a caveat to account for if the state of Tennessee comes in and says, we don't really need this started yet until we get this resolved, that we're still able to cooperate with them. And I'll let Mike speak to that if he needs to. Because the things that are going on with the state, we are aware that there are issues that they have. They just aren't things that this board has any authority over as a state.
But in fairness, there's no way to know that they have the ability to give you a start date at this point?
No, sir. Not, not from that perspective. That's the one caveat I would say. Otherwise, with regard to, you know, getting the permit and establishing a timeline, we do have a construct. Our standard timeline is you've got to show activity when, within twelve months and then largely be complete within two years without going before the board's attorney appeals for a request and extension. That's our standard, that's our standard timeline for permits.
But those standards will apply to them no different than any other?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
If I understand what you're saying, each governmental entity that has an area of authority in regard to any development, if one, if they don't overlap, one agency can take care and approve their portion of a project and another agency can do that. One doesn't have to be outdone and the other one not. They don't wait on each other. They don't go together. They can go independent with each other.
Not necessar, yeah, that's, that's true. Obviously, we don't want to do something if we can help it that adversely impacts the state's efforts to get whatever compliance they need on their issues in whatever agency you're talking about, whether it's Department of Land Conservation, Department of Education, State Fire Marshal's Office, what have you.
That's a little bit of a different, difficult road to walk, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Can be. It's complicated.
Do we have anyone else here today? Please come forward, state your name for the record, sir.
My name is Philip Burke. I'm a neighbor who lives about a mile the other direction from the church. I can hear the church services from my yard Wednesday night. I did. Just wanted to briefly read paragraph fifteen from the county lawsuit from last year. It said, "On October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, applicant Greg Porcher's made application on behalf of the church to the Board of Zoning Appeals of Wilson County, Tennessee, seeking to use the additional property for church use beyond the parcel of house and existing church building." At the hearing on November eighteen, twenty twenty-one, relief was granted, subject to conditions. Those conditions being that all legal issues, stormwater issues and zoning issues must be resolved. To date, these issues remain unresolved and outstanding. So as far as I can tell, the stormwater issues are beyond my understanding as a, as a layperson. But in terms of the legal issues, there is still a county lawsuit outstanding. There's a neighbor lawsuit outstanding. There's been questions raised about the legal ownership of the property that are not resolved. Stormwater issues, as I understand it, there's been a plan presented, but the water is still rushing off. It's not resolved to date. And zoning issues, I don't believe have been resolved. It's a zone as a low-density rural residential neighborhood. And so the noise issues and traffic issues associated with a low-density residential neighborhood have not been resolved. So if, if the conditional approval is granted based on resolving these three things, it seems to me that that remains open. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Polly Blocket. I live in Mount Vernon Estates. I live about a mile northeast of the church. I'm here to advocate for the West Wilson community and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'm requesting this commission to address the several substantial issues with this property prior to considering approval for the site plan and combining the five lots. A conditional approval for the church use in an R1 zone was granted to Global Vision in twenty twenty-one. The property owner has proceeded to use the property without meeting these conditions as still outlined. Since this approval in twenty twenty-one, numerous additional concerns have been made very apparent and need to be taken into consideration for approval of use on appeal. Per the ordinance six point forty-four point zero four, this board is authorized to require reasonable conditions, being met concerning noise and other nuisances that may be caused by this property. One of my primary concerns is the overloading on county roads due to the excessive number of vehicles that have caused congestion and evasive closure of the roads. They've required NJPD and the Wilson County Sheriff's Office to provide their services for traffic control during big events and wishes we sent to the property owner. However, to my knowledge, this utilization of taxpayer dollars has not been reimbursed by the property. This overloading not only poses a threat to safety and well-being of the residents, but also disrupts the tranquility and orderliness expected in an R1 period. An additional primary concern is the noise levels generated by this in ways that occur multiple times each week and the large-scale events that consistently exceeded reasonable limits causing unused services to the neighboring residents. Fewest complaints have been numerous for the Wilson County Sheriff's Office and they have been about eight hundred submitted since January of twenty twenty-three. It affects approximately eighty-five hundred property owners in a one-point-two-five mile radius. We can hear it inside our homes. We don't have peace in our homes when they have the services. My last concern will be who will hold them accountable to see if there will be site backs. It is clearly evident out of history that they have no regard for lawful advice from our county zoning officials and in their current issues with the Tennessee State Fire Marshal, as you guys see in their reports. I implore you all to require that this property owner address traffic concerns, reimburse the taxpayer dollars that were used on traffic control and in noise mitigation solution. I also ask this commission to ensure to have a plan in place that ensures the property owner is held accountable for falling through these claims. Is paramount these concerns are addressed and worse, protect the health, safety and welfare of the community. And I ask you all to defer approval until these are met. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir.
Morning. My name's Bob Franklin. Living twenty fifteen, I was driving up here. Before I say anything, I just want to thank all y'all. I sat on planning commission for about eleven years. Lowest pay, highest work, unforgiving. I appreciate that you've stepped up and given it to the community. I feel your pain. I'm going to try to be brave. I've been on the board of commissioners for ten years and I have received more complaints on this turf than all other contexts combined, times five. And this isn't even in my district. Next one. It's not just noise. It's traffic. It's lack of planning, lack of road management for big events. We've shut down roads during holiday weekends. We just stranded people in their homes. It's a real problem. There are people, children, that couldn't get to the pharmacy if they had to over holiday weekend. And this is a real concern. Traffic is not an insignificant amount of this problem. The other problem that I see is that they're not paying any attention to. They ignored multiple stop work orders. They haven't done any plans and they've built what they wanted. They put up a structure that failed to weather one of Mother Nature's mildest little snowstorms that we had this year. And the roof caved in on tents. There's a reason that you don't put three or four hundred people in a tent, folks. The wind blows real strong. You might find those folks over in the garden. This is right in the tornado alley of the flat of my daughter's house and triple crown four years ago, almost to this day. And this is a health and safety issue that you would allow people to congregate in such a large number in something that doesn't appear to me to be anywhere near something building country. So here's what I said. It says in your subdivision regulations and section five, article five, which says, "Serve these various legal status in the event that is decided by the planning commission." So you guys can decide this as you want to. You know, an old hero of mine in the political world said, "Trust but verify," right? Okay. Well, if you're going to trust to approve this, that these folks who ignored every one of your orders for one or three years. Better verify. And one way to do it is with money. You can do a letter of credit if you'd like to. And I would suggest that you do a large enough letter of credit and a large enough and a short enough time span that gets the attention and find out whether or not any of these improvements that are subject to this approval are going to be carried out. Because so far, what have they done? What have they avoided? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else here in the legislation speaking on this case? Yes, ma'am?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Laura Billbury. I'm a resident of Chandler Point, which is a subdivision about a mile to the west of Global Vision. I can hear it every time that I have a service and bring up their drums. So the church says they just want to have a fair chance like anyone else. And as such, I feel they should be held to the standards of any other building project in the county. As Mr. Franklin just stated, the county filed a lawsuit against the church. Interestingly, it was filed one year ago today, March twenty-second. And as it states, the church has been in violation of multiple stop work orders going back as far as July twenty nineteen. And they continue to violate these orders to this day and perform extensive work without permits. They seem to operate under the idea of it's better to ask forgiveness than to get permission. And one just has to wonder if that's going to continue to be the case with this project. As you know, they're involved in another lawsuit filed by the neighbors that's unresolved. They're under inspection by the state fire marshal's office, which you've probably seen the latest report where they have still many outstanding violations, I believe, eleven, the noise. This binder contains copies of all of the Wilson County sheriff call logs for the past fifteen months to the church. There are nine hundred and seventy-eight calls in fifteen months to this church. And nine hundred and thirteen of those are due to excessive noise, which is referred to in the sheriff's records as disturbing the peace, which is a very accurate statement. The sound carries for over a mile. It's in the middle of a highly populated area affecting at least eight thousand residents. People can't sleep at night. They can't put their kids to bed. It interferes with the quiet enjoyment of our homes. On more than one occasion, they've built large bonfires that burn toxic materials. And the state TDAC sends them a notice of violation letter and the church leader says in his sermon, "They're going to do it again." So the current operation is a public nuisance, quite frankly. It does affect the health, safety and welfare of the community and the attendees as well. The structure is unsafe and the noise probably isn't great inside the tent either, I imagine. So I don't feel they should be branded permission to expand further and I would request denial of the site plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak here today on this case?
I will. I came late, but I'll know. Good morning, everyone and neighbors of the Mount Juliet area. My name is Laura Gillespie. I'm a registered nurse. I'm a nurse practitioner. I live about a tenth of a mile from this establishment, if you want to call it that. As you know, not only are we trying to put children to bed at night, we have community health people that are shift, I mean nighttime workers and our daytime sleepers. This interferes with their quality of sleep and quality of life. I, in that binder, have made probably over a hundred of those calls. It's every Saturday morning, I mean every Sunday morning. It's every Sunday night. It's every Wednesday night, I'm speaking. And it has been multiple times that my driveway has been blocked. People have tried to park in my yard, which is a flood zone also. This potentially could cause hazardous waste coming down. They have disrupted the natural habitat around and they are not in friendly community. This is not about religion. This is about being a good neighbor and the place where we want to be. Thank you for your attention and I would just like to sign in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak today? Yes, sir?
Thank you, turn.
Yes, sir. My name's J.A. Walker. I'm actually a Christian music artist. I'm probably one of the very few Christian music artists that actually can say they actually have a church home. I live in Hendersonville, Tennessee. I live thirty-three miles to the other's church. We have people who come from Chattanooga, Kentucky, and there is one simple reason, the power of God's sake. And we all know that. And many people come from all over the world. And the minute they walk, they pull on that line, that's the first thing they say is they feel the power of God there. And that's why they come there, from all over the world. This church, I have seen this church help people in the community. It brings in a lot of revenue from the city. You know, we, we've seen people heal from terminal illness. We've, with no medical explanation as to why. And that's a proven solid fact. You know, in the Bible of Jacob's life, Moses murdered Saul, hunted down Christians. David had an affair. Peter, Peter disowned Jesus, and yet God used every single one of them to build his kingdom. You know, if people come against your home or your church family or your family, you do what you could to protect them. You know, you say what you could. You know, we're doing everything we can to be good neighbors. And there's a lot of people who have unfairies plans and want to make false accusations against our church and say, "We're not being good. We're not being God." And the fact is, we are. And so, you know, we do ask you that we approve the site plan for, we do believe that it's the best for everyone involved. And I ask that the Lord bless each and every one of you in making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Please come forward.
I have stories today. I'm David and I am one of the scout members for the church. So I am hearing like a lot of the same things. And personally, from my understanding, working for the church for the last year and a half now, is that everyone is complaining about this, the noise complaint and the runoff and all that stuff. But my understanding is there are hard things that we're trying to do as ways to fix that a bit. But at the same time, we do have to follow the rules and the regulations of those counties, the rules and regulations of the state of Tennessee. And if you guys do say something and if we're trying to relate and do that, then it falls to a place of where we're not there, it's, it's honoring. falls to a place of where we're not there for this, and this honoring the state of Tennessee. So it may seem like to our neighbors that we aren't doing anything to, to fix these problems or, or fix the issues. We actually are, but sometimes it comes to a place where we can't because the state of Tennessee may say one thing, and Wilson County may say another. Um, but I do want to apologize to all my neighbors, um, to anyone else that it's affected by the church in Wilson County, that we are sorry, and we do apologize, especially since it's all this, countless of hours throughout the day, on the phone, trying to make things happen for the neighborhood that we're surrounded by, also for Wilson County, also for the state of Tennessee. So, um, with that being said, I do apologize to every single person who was affected by Global Vision Bible Church.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else we should speak today on this case?
Hello, my name is Ruth Paul. And again, I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity to speak today. Everyone that has, um, a segment, I appreciate them, and use for me and those inside, so we thank everyone who shared up today, and we want to listen to every perspective. Um, I just would ask that, um, people would look at our side as well, or try and look at your side. I don't understand the plans, I am just a layperson, so I'm not involved with that. So I'm just speaking as the person that attends the church. My husband and I moved from Florida to attend this church two and a half years ago, and God moves in a powerful way through this church. Uh, we've seen wonders, signs, and miracles, and we do try and strive to be good neighbors. Um, we're kind of, it appears from my perspective to be caught in a catch twenty-two a lot of times. You want this done, you can't do it without a permit, and we can't get the permit because of concerns. And so we are striving. Uh, we bought a new tenant with thicker walls, we built a wall around it trying to control the sound. Um, we've done everything that we could, uh, on the last convention to, uh, get the traffic set up and have buses and shuttles and everything that we can possibly do. And from my understanding, that that went amazing, and we had a lot of compliments from, um, the state and, um, the county and people that were in that. So, and the burning, the issue that, you know, I mean hazardous materials, we're burning books, uh, books that promote witchcraft and things like that. So I feel that some things were maybe exaggerated, some things maybe people just are quoting things that they've heard, and they're not hard facts. So I'm just asking everyone to take the opportunity to come to our church, to speak for yourself. We love you, we love the community, we love everyone here, and, uh, I just pray God's blessings on everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else we should speak on this case? Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Pate, and I actually moved from Indiana to come to Tennessee Mount Juliet church. We have been put in a really bad light by a lot of people that are neighbors. But this kind of religion was not freedom of religion. And I know one thing for sure, is that our church, our pastor is one of the most giving, caring, generous people that I know. And I've sat under a lot of pastors, and I can tell you that he is a caring pastor. And he does not want the church to be put into a bad light. And there are plans that are being made. And I know there's a lot of people that have got up here and spoke badly about our church. Why? Well, they say noise, but I understand that there is a noise ordinance. If there's not a noise ordinance, how can you complain about the noise? I mean, maybe it's up to the council or someone in the state to set up an ordinance that says that, but we have not ignored anything that's been said. The site plans are ongoing, and as far as I know, didn't you say that your engineer has information that will confirm that information also? Site plans have been corrected?
Yes, the site plans have been submitted. To be clear to the other side, um, we're under litigation for failure to submit those site plans and get permits when the work began. Uh, so just in fairness of everybody's perspective.
I can tell you that, and I am a layman, I'm not, I don't know what exactly goes on, but I can tell you that there have been people saved, thousands of people have been saved. What does the Lord want us to do? Go into all the world and reach the gospel to all nations, right? Who is our nations? Who are our neighbors? We try to be, how can I say this, God to our neighbors. Uh, the noise thing, I understand that there are concerns about that, and I know our church is looking into other things. I, like I said, I'm not privy to that information. But we've seen people saved, thousands of people have been saved in just a few years. Thousands of people have been delivered from, and being oppressed as Christians, being oppressed by demons. And those demons have fled. So I just want to say, thank you for your time, but don't just listen to one side of it. There are a lot of good people that love our church and love our Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else we should speak on this case today?
Sir, a quick question.
Would you like to come forward?
Uh, could we hear a recap of the technical review from the engineer?
Do we have that ability right now, Tom?
I think Kramer's willing to, I asked him to come specifically because I did think there would be some technical questions. Um, we can do that now, or we can wait until you're considering the matter?
Let's go ahead and do that now.
Good morning, part of a total, more total, civil review. Uh, our office assists the Wilson County stormwater to make sure that your standards are being adhered to within the plans that come through from the technical. Do you think? Uh, yes, sir. Over the past couple of months, we've been working with Morley, an engineering who the church has contracted to do the design work for these plans. Um, and we've been going back and forth, and Mr. Floyd brings up a lot of the points, and we've been working with Morley to make sure that your standards are being adhered to with these proposed plans. Um, and as of today, they've come a long way with providing calculations. As Tom said, they've got three ponds to manage as well as water quality structures. Uh, Tom, as I was coming up here today, just briefly mentioned they also address some stormwater, uh, with the Chandle, with removing some driveway aprons, uh, improving the ditch, as well as the three ponds that Tom was talking about. Uh, and so basically, from our standpoint, the proposed plans, as presented today, would be in compliance with the county standards. From that point, we would require them to provide ad rebuilds of these conditions once they're constructed, to make sure that they come to fruition. And basically, your permits would still be active until those ad rebuilds are submitted and etcetera. Any other questions we got? I believe Alejandro's here. He was the design engineer.
Alejandro Mahica with, uh, Morley and Associates is the church's contracted engineer that performed the design work and got the calculations and design to our staff for review. Um, I want to reiterate, though, I want you to go back over what specifically are they doing on Chandler Road, and they're making ditch improvements on their side?
That's correct. So they're proposing to take out a few of those driveway aprons that are there now, and clean that up, improve the ditch, and they provide calculations or so. And also, a big component of that, a lot of the drainage area that's now going to that ditch, they're capturing and directing to one of the proposed ponds. So that, in our mind, will help alleviate that drainage area, capture the runoff, manage it before releasing it.
Once installed and implemented.
Is the parking area all paved?
No, sir. At present, at least, it's gravel pad for the most part. I think there's one section near the old church facility that's no longer there, um, that may have some concrete apron.
Correct, yes. Majority gravel.
Which already.
And I would like also, Mr. Floyd, one of his comments was, we have required the design engineer to demonstrate that their proposed conditions are being compared to pre-development conditions before any improvements were made on the property. So that's making sure that you're comparing apples to apples, a post-developed person.
Do you, uh, make calculations that would predict to the best of your ability the gallons of runoff there is for given, uh, rain events? Is there some way to do that?
Well, the design engineer was faultful in that, and they have demonstrated that they're close to though, that runoff rates would be less than pre-development.
Design, you recommend? What is the, what is the average percentage? Do you recommend fifteen percent above the, the flow rates, twenty percent in your design, above the design to take over of what you think's going to be there?
Your current, uh, standards are to delay flows for the two to twenty-five years from the end, and that's what they're talking about.
Twenty-five year norm. Anyone else on the board having any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I do have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, Tom Limetz on the ad rebuilds. Is that within the two-year or one-year?
Well, our standard, our standard, once we issue a permit, which this would have to be approved, and then they would have to submit any additional revisions that come out of the conditions of approval for this, and we would stamp them, we'd likely have a pre-con with the engineering construction crew that they choose, uh, and then we would permit for stormwater and subsequently for building permits. They typically, under building permits, have, uh, twenty-four months within which to complete that work. Now, there is, as we talked about, uh, there are some other things afoot with the state of Tennessee that may delay some of the progress towards, uh, I guess, making progress. But, um, one thing that we stated publicly in the paper and other places in the media after filing this litigation is that we were willing to still try to work with the church to resolve our issues with them. I may know much about it, they, they did everything, uh, or we did everything we could to try to not wind up in litigation with a religious entity, because that's not a place that a county government or local government jurisdiction needs to be, uh, in this day and age with regard to protection of religious freedoms and everything else. Uh, I do not feel that our litigation attacks their religious freedom. I do feel that we were asking them to do some of the same, take some of the same steps we would ask of any other entity in terms of protecting neighboring properties from drainage and, and traffic, uh, issues. Those are things we can control. Noise, right or wrongly, we do not have anything in our zoning that we have authority over, um, nor are we the authority over the, uh, internal construction requirements such as what the state fire marshal may, uh...
This got to.
Yeah. And there's also additional case law that we have to be cognizant of that I can let the county attorney speak to you about it.
This leads into another question. So, in this twenty-four months, if this happens, and the car gets in front of the horse, a non-permeable building continues, paving, buildings, etc., will the water increase if it's not completed?
If they add additional, if they add additional, uh, facilities to the property, most certainly, I think that there is that, that possibility. And to people's concerns, I, I think that that may be a valid concern if I'm, if I'm a neighbor, just from the standpoint of, we, we ended up having to file a litigation because we could not get them to submit a site plan after requesting it, and, and submit for permits after requesting it, um, initially, which led us kind of into a corner portion for litigation, not for damages, but for compliance. In my estimation, what you have before you, with our cooperation to, to continue to try to work with them to resolve our issues, um, is, is an effort on behalf of the church to submit those, that needed documentation and move us forward in some incremental fashion. Now, does that mean that we're going to drop the suit immediately after approving the site plan today? No. I don't think so. I think Mike would echo that, where, I don't see Mike, there is. But, uh, uh, that, those are things that we would still require, again, the implementation of the improvements that they propose, uh, without adding additional, uh, rooftop or a paved area or anything else to the property in the interim. If they do that, they would need to come back in with additional site plan, the way we'd, we, we were initially asking them to do with the work they've done today and continue to do.
For physical remediation of the drainage problem?
Yes. I don't know if that answered your question, I kind of went around the horn there.
Thank you.
Will I have others?
Okay.
Twenty-four months, did I understand you said twenty-four months to complete the land?
That's our standard permit lifespan for a building permit. It's, uh, you've got twelve, you've got to make progress within any twelve-month period, and then it's supposed to be completed within a twenty-four month period unless they come before the board asking for extension. Or the zoning appeals.
So I'm not this board.
They, they haven't gotten a permit yet. Yeah, we haven't, yeah, we haven't, no, sir. We haven't, we haven't even begun a permit process because they've not been issued a permit. Because we didn't have, we didn't have the required site plan documentation that we can prove and set them free to.
You didn't have the information to present us?
Do we have anyone else here that they wish to speak on this case? I'm sorry, Tom.
I don't mean to say that you have to follow that timeline, I'm just telling you what the standard in the ordinance is. You can give me the timeline you want.
I was just going to say, obviously, we went through the storm drain, um, we've got many concerns for luck on that. But on the site plan itself, if the science of this, um, entity and the traffic and the parking, would there not be our normal standard of turn lanes and slow down lanes?
That would be up to, that, that would be up to the road commission to require, um, I'll let Christopher, I think Christopher's talked with the road commission about that a little bit.
That, that particular apartment is completely, the road commission required, they have reviewed these plans, their biggest issue was the unlimited curb cover. This site plan before you limits that to, I believe, four access points on Chandler Road and zero on Old Lebanon Dirt, and that, to my knowledge, has met their, um, that is not your satisfaction for the traffic on this particular incident.
And, and another caveat, Old Lebanon Dirt Road is not within the jurisdiction of the county road commission.
Correct.
That's Mount Juliet. And, and it's our understanding through email received from Mr. Mahica, uh, the engineer for the proj, project, uh, that he's been in contact with Mount Juliet and, and gotten response back, uh, to move some of the drainage facilities and some of their structures back off of Old Lebanon Dirt Road. And I'm assuming that they're not proposing any connections to Old Lebanon Dirt Road at Mount Juliet's behest or with Mount Juliet's encouragement not to have direct connection to Old Lebanon Dirt Road.
But how does that eliminate the traffic issue then? Lebanon Dirt Road's going to be...
For a special event, I really, this, this process doesn't really take that into account. What I would, and what I've talked offline with, uh, the legal representation, engineering representation for the church in our, our recent meetings about is when they have special events, it's, it's going to be incumbent upon the church to make arrangements, um, similar to what at least somebody described, I don't know how effective or ineffective they were, uh, but, uh, with regard to having, you know, maybe large-scale off-site parking areas that they shuttle feet to, those special events they might choose to have. Uh, it'd be similar to people posting, uh, policemen out, uh, out of their entrances, uh, off-duty policemen, many times, uh, out of their entrances at church, a larger church, uh, after service left out or before service left in. You'll see several churches nowadays doing that. So that, that's the only answer I've got for that, and that's not something that's really involved in zoning. In terms of parking calculations, I think they've got adequate arcing for the number of seats in the sanctuary. Sorry.
Do we have anyone else here that we should speak on this case today? You would state your name for the record, please, sir?
My name's Sam Sonnaker, and just grateful for your opportunity, thank you guys for hearing this today, and we're going to make a decision, no matter what it may be. Um, I've been attending Global Vision Bible Church nearly for the last four years. I've been attending Global Vision Bible Church nearly for the last four years, seeing the transitions of the tents that we've had, the tents that we've grown to and grown to and grown to, and in fact, our numbers from my calculations and from what I've seen being part of the church have started to decrease. I think that's in a positive light as many of the members that we have now are devout in their faith and we're getting the right crowd into our church and the wrong crowd out. Some of the events that we talked about with the traffic problems, one, maybe two per year with those traffic situations, and I'll speak on behalf of our leader of our traffic team that this past September when we had our conference, lots of reports positively from neighbors, from localities officials, and I think they did an outstanding job. So, I think on his behalf, there was parking down the street, shuttles to and from, and compared to the year prior where there were absolutely traffic situations, we did everything in our power to resolve that issue, and I think we did a successful job. I will also say that I think we've done a successful job in everything that we've had the ability to do. We do really tend to shine a light everywhere that we go. It is the most loving family that I've ever been a part of in my life, and I've been going to church for thirty-four years. The family that we have here does want to be your neighbor. We do want to shine a light and be the best that we can possibly be and be a reflection of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. In everything that we do, we want to abide by the law. We want to do what is right. We want to be a reflection of Christ in all that we do. And from the conversations that I've heard, I think it's the understanding that we have been stuck in a bit of a limbo situation. We want to do something, but yet we don't have the means to do it at this point. So, we're looking forward to the decision that will be made today so we can continue to make improvements on our property, that we can continue to shine a light and love on people and see people baptized and see people confess faith and their belief in Jesus Christ. And we can continue just to have our church services. Sunday mornings and Wednesday nights are beautiful, and as Ms. Ruthie said, you know, we encourage you all to come and, come and see for yourselves. There's been countless people that I've spoken to myself that had a bad outlook on Global Vision until they stepped inside the tent for the first time and got a hug around their neck and were loved on and truly felt the love of Christ in that place. That's all we want to reflect, that's all we want to do, and this is just to abide by what we need to abide by, continue to hold our church services. Hebrews ten twenty-five says, "Do not forsake the assembly." Even more so as you see that day approaching when Jesus is coming back, we should be gathering together more and more and more, and that's all we want to do. Acts, chapter five, thirty-eight and thirty-nine says, "And now I say to you, refrain from these men, and let them alone; for if this is counsel, or this would be of men, it will come to not; but if it be of God, you cannot overcome, lest haply you be found even to fight against God." I really do believe that this is a work and a move of the Lord and a move of God here at Global Vision. We've heard countless folks move from states over, many visitors from states over coming every weekend to be a part of a move of God. We have seen healings, we have seen miracles and signs and things that are unexplainable to science but absolutely believable to the faith and the truth of Jesus Christ. We just want to continue to do what we can do, and if this could have been overthrown, it would have been overthrown long ago. And I thank you guys.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wish to speak on this case?
So, let's just say real quick, I mean, you're actually the head of the parking team at Global Vision Bible Church, so I'll just kind of break the record on something very quick. I did oversee the parking operation for the two thousand twenty-three Deliverance Conference, so I was in charge of the on-site and the flow of traffic and all that there, and I just wanted to just kind of speak to what happened there. Traffic back was very minimal for that. It was a very successful event. There were some exaggerations in the media as far as what happened there in the context of, they can have to be much worse than it really was. It was not that whatsoever. There was some incidents at night where roads were shut down by Mount Juliet police for an hour, but I was told to my face by Mount Juliet police that had nothing to do with us. That was going to happen regardless of what we did or what we didn't do. So, I just wanted to kind of clear the record on that and, um, I'd even wish to say that there were some people who were disappointed about how well it went, because I felt like there were some people who wanted it to go poorly, to use that against us, that we agreed in while it happened. We would not allow that to happen. And we will, in the future, do the best of our ability to make things seem a little more successful whether we have to go all side or whether we have to make changes, whether we have to do that. But as far as special events go, we're not going to allow it on a regular basis to be some great community speaking around us. So, we don't want that. We don't want to block y'all away and we don't want to take any of these shows. And I can speak to the past events, I worked under those, that was a really good people who wanted. So, I just want to kind of correct the record and kind of express my experience of what happened.
Thank you.
That's all.
Yes, sir.
Again, Lawrence, I'm going to speak. Thank you for your testimony, it was very nice. I would like to say that on his behalf, speaking of noise ordinance, that addresses the county side. I live in the city but a tenth of a mile from the church, so the noise does affect other Wilson County residents that happen to live in the city but not in the county. I'm as close to them as I could be to you, and it is a problem. And there is a separation of church and state. I do not believe that anybody should be up there quoting any verses from the Bible because there's other religions that are here representing. So, I think that separation of church and state needs to happen. And with all due respect to anyone who's here, what we are dealing with is a modern-day Jones Jones.
We're not going to. At this hour, we'll close the public comment section of our thing. I would ask if we have any questions from our board?
Yes, sir.
Good guy. Heard both sides. Difficult to interact, a larger group with smaller entities surrounding it. Just some comments. But it would make some of my own. This document has no bearing. It's the state, as it's been described to our board, from our directors, from our inspectors and our county board. But it does go to intent, character, and community interaction. So, heard that things began to build without proper permits. Did not hear a discrepancy against that claim, so that's a concern. Not something we can vote on because the state's going to talk to you about that. But there was a comment that said, there's a difference between county and state, and we're having a problem addressing both. Tom, question for you. Do we have discrepancies between county and state that would cause an entity such as the church? I don't know those, so.
I don't, I don't, I can't point to any singular discrepancy that I withheld a little bit of, in my comments about timeline, I withheld a little bit of a discretion for us to speak with the state to make sure that we're not, if we approve a site plan to proceed to construction with permitting, that we're not in some, in some way undercutting their ability to get something done on their end. That's, that's all I was saying there.
So, the non-permeable.
But I'm not familiar with any specific conflicts between what the state's requiring and what we're requiring, because frankly, they're inside the building, they're dealing with things like propane tanks that were inside the tent, or improper timber construction or timber storage near the tent.
It's listed twelve hours.
And grass and undergrass issues, things like that with regard to the building itself. That's the state fire marshal report. We've also heard, or at least hearsay, of some back and forth of communication with National Electric Service, the State Department of Environment Conservation on their septic disposal, and to some extent, Department of Education about a potential school that they may or may not be operating or proposing to operate on the property.
Mr. Chairman, I have two more questions.
This non-permeable work that happened, is this going to be under the umbrella once the plant is issued?
Everything that's on that site plan would be eligible to receive, if it's approved, would be eligible to receive permits, both stormwater and drainage permits as required and, and building permits as required for the, for the tent facility at this point, since I do feel that they've added some permanent features to it, as well as the bathroom facility and the two school buildings are the things that I know of that they've added since twenty nineteen, or twenty twenty, when this all started, respectfully. And then, another point was raised during public comment, what happens if they continue to add stuff? Well, that again would be something that they should technically come in and submit a site plan for initially so that we can go through this process more, more traditionally and more smoothly so that we're not chasing after the fact to try to get the information we need to get it to you, to get an approval, and subsequently get permits issued.
It's safe to say anything that's proposed within this site plan is subject to permitting and expectation that has been finished.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Yes, sir. The focus, and I don't know that we can add this to a motion. I hear passion on both sides. The belief is strong for both. And I think there can be a median between you. It's not for us to decide. We're hamstruck by the law. We only have a few things that we can control. We cannot control this state document. We're a county entity. But what we can do is suggest that you try to work things out to help each other for that reason. It's not a religious statement. That is a neighborly statement between the two. Just an old wisdom from an old guy. Okay? The last one would be a concern, and the question is this, is if how do you address the parking that would impede a driveway or someone's yard and that kind of thing? Because you are growing, and it would be to the traffic monitor, your controller, your director, to ensure that happens. Something may be stated in the, your church session, saying, please be aware of our neighbors, et cetera. Just a suggestion there. So, I can see the concern on both sides, but without quoting the Bible, we all know that there's the Romans that have laws and legality to adhere to. This document is one of them from the state. There's another one from Wilson County. We have to adhere to that. How you build, the safety, some of the things I read here is all about your people. You want fire detection. Why? So they can get out of the building and get home safely to their families. So, none of this is done frivolously. It's done with an intent to protect all citizens, the church as well as the surrounding area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Tom, again, let me clearly understand. We talked about this earlier. We're talking about columns of jurisdiction, if you can visualize what I'm trying to say. We are in charge of one of those columns of jurisdiction. We don't have any control beyond the column we oversee, and thereby we can handle the area that our jurisdiction covers, no more and no less. Is that correct?
I would say that is correct, and I would say that while I may have preferred to have gotten a site plan for their proposed work to this point, prior to having to file litigation, again, we have clearly, from the county's perspective, stipulated in the media that, that we would be willing to try to work with the church to resolve this issue. I do think this is at least one step in that direction. Is it going to please everybody because it doesn't address noise and it doesn't necessarily attract, address traffic at special events? Absolutely not, because that's not what our litigation was about.
Mr. Chairman. So, two years in. Seemed like it was just two years ago we was talking about this stuff. And I don't, I'm not as strong as Tom on kicking things down the road. Kick just kind of pretty far. May have to kick some more, I don't know. But one of the things that's concerning, we can't unring, I just saw this today, first time I've seen this, twenty pages. It's hard to unring a bell in a city of red. And unfortunately, these folks either side haven't seen this from here. And we've still got a piece of pending litigation. They're right.
From the county, there's also a private lawsuit.
But I'm, I'm really not concerned about the private side. There's no deal with that. As far as we are concerned, we still have pending litigation.
We do.
I've never seen a city or a county pending litigation for anything this time. I got a little bit confused.
I may have to add my address at the end.
Let me just finish off.
Yes, sir.
If we're going down the road with this, which I think we are, what point in time do we ask the Mount Juliet Regional Planning Authority to step into this, this room here? And talk to us about the Old Lebanon Dirt Road and what's going on with them? Instead of me just hearing, all fairness, just hearing hearsay and remember the conversation. I, out of respect, they should come here, whether they're opposed to the structure or not, or they work with it, I don't really know. I hear different people say differently.
Yes, sir.
They should be in this room along with the next time we meet, if this issue comes up and looks like it will maybe again, the state fire marshal.
That's a fair assessment.
I, I mean, I, I just think it's hard to make a true, long-lasting decision without the right players have been here, for the people who are for and against to hear from them, even though we're saying that what they say or how they feel may not affect our, but.
Yes, sir.
The way I feel about it. Mr. Chairman, if I remember correctly, one of the deferrals was based on the recommendation or suggestion by our legal counsel that we not make any decisions here until some of the legal issues are resolved first. Is that not correct, Mike?
That legal issue is probably too broad a statement. The basis for our lawsuit is the things we've been trying to get the church to do. And the planning staff sent letters, we had meetings, we tried to explain what needed to be done. It didn't get that, and then we filed a lawsuit. I didn't realize it had been a year to date. I don't remember when it wasn't there. It's been so much, it's been so long. But the lawsuit is there about the things that somebody said here that we control, and that's the zoning ordinance, stormwater, drainage, et cetera. The state issues, the state government general would have to deal with if it goes to litigation. But our litigation is there. It wasn't, we didn't file that just because we wanted it. We tried every way in the world to avoid it. Now, that it's there, we tried to work with them to make sure they do the things that we said all along need to be done. If you vote to approve this today, I want everybody to understand lawsuit, and I made some things come in the past a little bit too broad. Whatever happens here today, the lawsuit's not in the way. If you approve them getting their permits and, and this site plan, Mr. Franklin said, trust and verify, that's what I was sitting here thinking. How we got it. And we're going to leave that lawsuit pending to make sure that happens. If it happens, then also we can just, I don't know who will have gotten, the government will have gotten what they wanted done, what had to be done, not what we wanted, what had to be done under our law. It's not a question that anybody wants, it's complying with the law. So, that, I would be clear, the lawsuit goes down for the time being.
What you're saying is, if I read, if I read between the lines of I'm trying to catch here, if we approve that, that might be a catalyst to get some things finally done, get resolved the lawsuit and get the ball rolling. We might, by doing so today, that's the only thing I'm seeing right now that would be valued, is doing this decision.
That is the reason, John, that we have given this much time and met with their legal counsel and met with their engineer, trying to make sure we could get to the point where we're in compliance with county laws and regulations. Now, do I want, I'm just speaking here, I don't have a vote. Do I want to wait two years for that to happen?
I really do.
I mean, we know what the issue is, we've known it. Somebody said here we started this in twenty-one. We're now three years in good. We knew what the issues were three years ago. They're still here today, and I don't know why we need to wait two years to get it done. And that's just me. And sooner or later, a court's going to, a judge's going to look at me and say, Mr. King, who are you going to go back to the lawsuit? It's sitting here. So, I'll leave it sitting there as long as I can, but I may have to take some action. Not encouraging that. Not encouraging that, while we're taking a chance to resolve this. Not encouraging that, while we're taking a chance to resolve this. It can be resolved, but it could have been resolved three years ago without the lawsuit.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor.
Well, Mike, that's not a good idea here. So, if we move forward with this in some capacity today. And if something bad happens under this state fire marshal, are we liable?
I don't think we're liable, because the state fire marshal is on, I guess they use it on a different level. They're on a different governmental plan.
Different call.
Their, their enforcement or whatever they do would be through the state government general, most likely in Davidson County. Ours is here locally, enforcing purely local laws and regulations. So I don't think they'll overlap, and I don't think we can be, in other words, we're not holding them up. If they want to do something today, they can.
Yeah, they can have that.
Yeah, yeah, they do what they want. We can, we can stop that, or we want to, either way.
This is a progress report.
I'm sorry.
As I, as I see this, this is a progress report. It tells us what's going on down there, and some of this is lined through, and I assume has been done. Is that correct, Tom?
That's not from our office, but I believe that may be correct.
So, I've been in, I'm kind of back and forth with the state fire marshal's office for some time now. When it all first started, I was not the representative of the church. In, in the, in recent times, that, that representative that we had at the time has since left the church. And no longer works for the church. So, since then, I've done everything in my power to make sure that we meet the requirements that the state fire marshal's office is requiring of us. We, we're, there's a lot of stuff that we have to, I mean, there's a lot of things that kind of go into that. And this actually isn't the latest, it's, I have the latest, because I have to submit. I would say monthly, I have to submit a plan of corrective action, because we are moving forward, and that's why things are lined out. And that's why we're, because each of those things, items have been stricken off the list. It's been kind of a back and forth deal, and we, we've done everything we can, and we're doing everything we can now to be in compliance with the state. So I just wanted to kind of clear some things up on that, so you guys have better understanding of it. I hope that helps.
Mr. Chairman, I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
Mike, if we do put a timeline, as Tom was talking about, it could conflict with the state. Would that matter?
I don't, I don't know that it would, from our standpoint, the way I would, the way I would answer that, again, Eric would be. If we put some type of timeline on it, and they can just avoid saying, we don't need you to do that, then they can take some steps to stop that. But, as far as I know, these two matters, while they deal with the same vision, they've never crossed. They're running by cover. State's doing what they think they have to do, or we're doing what we have to do.
Mr. Chairman. It looks like the state's been involved, according to this document, for a couple of years or so. Because their time complaint dates and their afflictions and things that happen. So they've been involved in this process, maybe behind us a year, so there is a process somewhere.
And they hadn't been there as long as we got there.
Mr. Reverend, for my colleague, clarity for me on this side of the house, two of our councilors. I heard that a yes vote possibly could help you, but a no vote be a detriment?
I'm not going to go there. No, and I, I'm not being, I'm going to do whatever the situation calls for. And right now, the lawsuit has to end, because if you approve something, that's not the end of it. It's not the end of it all. If you don't approve something, it's not the end of it. So I don't know that either way helps the lawsuit, but the lawsuit's got to be brought to a conclusion, one way or the other. That conclusion could have come about before the lawsuit.
So it's not, you don't have a document date or anything?
No, no, sir. The church, the church has not even filed an answer, and we've not asked for one, because we knew this was wrong. And let me say to everybody here, their legal counsel, and I, and Tom, Christopher, that Pugh, and I explained to him, whatever happened to be the right of the lawsuit.
Thank you, sir.
Can Mr. Ash's point about bringing Mount Juliet in with their plans on the road widening? If the road widening does impact the retention fines that are submitted on this current plan. Do they come back to us with a new site plan on how the runoff is to be handled, or how?
I believe I'm going to ask Kramer and Mr. Mahica to address that issue in terms of what progress they've made with Mount Juliet. And Chairman, and Chairman, right?
My name is Alejandro Maita, project engineer with Morley. So the question is, how do the future plans of Old Lebanon Road are going to affect our site? So we, we communicated with Mount Juliet and asked for the latest plans, and we've superposed that on our site. And we've been cognizant of what they're doing. We've moved some of the stormwater features that we have away from the roadway to where, in my opinion, they're going to, they're going to work well together. And we've also taken into account some of their storm sewer network that they're installing. And to make it easier to tie in some of our storm network to there, once that process happens. And we've also talked about Champ Road, and we've eliminated a curb cut that they had on Champ Road. Their plans, that was very close to the intersection, and so I think that's going to play a favorable role to not have cars, you know, try to enter the church right at the intersection. So I think we've, we've taken those preliminary plans that we have into account. And so hopefully that kind of gives you some peace of mind that we've been at least looking at their plans and coordinating with them to the extent that we can. To get our plans to work well with theirs.
Thank you, sir.
What, sir, what's, what's your, what is your involvement? Are you with the, I didn't understand what?
I'm the consultant engineer for the church.
For the church, okay.
If I were, we've heard from legal, we've heard from this gentleman, we've heard from our engineer, we've heard from you, Tom. We all know the history. It looks to me like that every agency, every entity that is involved in this is standing around a circle, and no one is willing to put his foot in the water. Now, I'm going to get a little bib, bib up off the page. He came down to the sea, and Feroz is running them hard, and he said, we can't run in the water. We shall all die. And the Lord said, step in the water. Step in. I think it's our point to step in the water. You've told us what it's going to do if we do it, and you counsel it. I think somebody's got to make a move here. And I want these folks to clearly understand, if we voted this in today, you must understand, you're at square one. We have sat around here for two years and not taken the square one. Not your fault, not our fault. This is probably one of the most complex agencies in this government. It deals with so many people, so many moving parts. It's unbelievable. You can't mow a yard for the nuts and bolts on this. Issues that come across this desk here, and this is a classical example of that. So understand, if you get a vote today, you're a far cry, but let, if we voted, it may be from my perspective. It would be a bummer to get the ball rolling.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask?
Yes, sir.
Tom, if we put, I'm sorry, I can't quote the Bible very well, but if we put a hundred and twenty day term limit on it, or a time limit on it. What has to be counted in a hundred and twenty days?
Well, I think a hundred and twenty days, that would be, what, four months? That might be a little tight for them getting all of their.
Six months.
Drainage construction in, and I'm just thinking practically.
Yeah.
And that's with no delays or additional conditions that this board has the authority to put on it. That we have to then receive additional revisions for. If we can stamp approved plans and move permitting through stormwater, and then maybe, what do you think, guys, six, six months to get the work done? After permitting?
Six months, probably really, time for, you know, the site plan, it was actually, and moving on.
The site plan, I think, is good for twelve months.
Tom, in fairness, to put timelines on things, I don't know that we can put a separate timeline that we would with any other person to come up here and approve a site plan. And be able to move it. Do we have that authority, Mike?
I think we do, and I think one of the things works in favor of the fact, this is not something started last week. It started three years ago. And I think that, but if, if the church, if we put that on them, and the church won't resist that, we'll talk about that in court.
So basically, this thing is going to be adopted, just going to be heard, if it's planned out.
Period, just to be honest, and, and, you know, it's either got to be fixed, or courts are going to have to fix it, or whatever.
But it can't be fixed without going to court, if you get on the law.
That's what we might have done for two years.
And, and Mike, I have a question about court. From the county's perspective, best case scenario, we've went to court to seek compliance. So that, best case scenario, from our, from the county's perspective of the suit, would be that that judge leans down and orders, says, Global Vision Bible Church. You must submit plans and submit for permits and deal with your drainage. Well, that's what this document is making an attempt to do, to start the ball off. Of course, they still have to implement it. They still have to get their permits and implement it, and I don't know that we're gaining anything with it going to court.
But here's the thing, it's different, and Tom, we just learned it here today, and following you, well, this is an educated launch by now.
Yes.
On all the processes. It shouldn't take you long.
No.
To go through the process now, if we give them some breathing room to commit, completing it, then we can make our own conclusion on our own. If they don't, then they're on their own. We come back in here again. I mean, I mean, it's not like somebody from there starts all over again because they just didn't know how the process worked.
Yes, sir.
They've done a great deal of work. But I'm saying the thing about those, all the owners out there, I don't think we're not oppressing their needs. There's commissioners in here. There's one sitting back there. They represent all those people, and I get that. I used to do that. Would you share if you agree to do it, don't you? I don't think it's going to be a bigger burden for them, us sitting here and saying it should take a year. I mean, everybody should be up to speed on it. Am I just, or am I just talking?
No, sir.
No, you're not. Okay, okay. At this time, I will call for a motion.
I make a motion. We approve in six month time, in six month time, man.
Second. I would ask, and what, I think we need to clarify, what that six months is.
Is that to get, is that to get the permitting or to, or to implement all of it?
Yeah, I mean, it's not fair to say six months to complete and handle the project. No, 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 but they have to, as you said a while ago, what has to be, or when I asked a while ago, what has to be completed in six months, if we put that time limit on? What are the points? Yes.
Well, they've, they've got to get their site plan stamped approved. They've got to get, they've got to get, have a pre-con, permits, and then installation. And, and, and then as-built.
But that should be no step for us, because they've already done it.
And that's in the motion. You, you may wish to hear from their engineering representative.
Y'all got a motion.
We, we, we got a motion. Effectively, their engineering, the case, six months may not be enough time for them to get as-built.
Your motion is to approve the site plan, some stack breaking deductions, and within a six-month period, they have to have their site plan approved and stamped and permitted in. Is that, is that, am I calling you correct? Is that correct, Tom?
If, if, if that's what you say it is, that's fine. Yeah, that's, that's the steps you want.
Those points that have to be completed in six months time. Yes. I think that encompasses everything he asked for.
So, so the, the points that have to be done in six months, and I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, are not all five of them. It's, it's, get the plan stamped approved, have a pre-con, and have permits in hand, and begin work.
We have, that's not what you said, sorry.
All right, can, can I just draw this motion until we get this clarified?
Sure.
All right, I'm. What you said was, you wanted to fill it. I took that from the end, the first time you got it first, I looked at the time you moved in. Now, that means something, I'm not trying to be, you.
Yeah.
Everybody here's going to have a different interpretation.
Yeah, they will.
If we don't like.
Only, only important, only Tom, I might not have the note, ask you if you'd accept amendment of the motion. Is that it's six months from the day that we have an oral hearing about this. And that the Mount Juliet Regional Fire and the state fire marshal, be asked by letter to appear in front of this committee to see where they are in the process. What are you looking at, you, Dave? I'm not asking, I'm just asking. I'm just asking, come on. Answer some questions.
No, but there needs to be some sort of limit on, so it's six months, and I get drawing, stamp, pre-con, etc. And two years later, I start getting water abatement that can happen with this particular motion.
I would agree with that motion. That's okay, man. Yes, I want those to be, I just want something done, and I want something concrete in six months.
Which means water abatement, at least fifty percent of it, eighty percent of it, whatever that might be, not just the paperwork. That's what I'm.
That's correct.
Is that the best way to say it?
If the counselor, Tom, if the motion includes, he's talking about six months, and the five points completed in six months that you mentioned a moment ago. If that is included in the motion, does that sound from a legal standpoint appropriate for you, Mike?
Yes, well, what I was saying a while ago is, I can tell that Eric made his motion, and I think I know what he meant, pretty sure. But there were about four or five people right down the, interpreted a little bit differently. And we had the confidence to think that when we live here, and everybody says, that's not what I heard.
Correct.
Be real specific in what you want, and vote it up or down.
So, if the six months, that everybody would understand that, and those five simple points, Tom, gets it over the finish line with that particular part of this?
The, the only caveat would be, I'm getting chatter from the engineer that represents the church, that he doesn't think six months gives him adequate time to do what? As-built?
Construction.
Construction, construction and as-built.
I don't, I don't think that, I think you're, I didn't say the whole work ethic, but you're saying.
So, so, so what if you said, what if you said, stamp approved plans, pre-con, permits, and work begun in six months?
In six months. That's what I was, whatever you say a while ago.
What, what, what did the gentleman say about that?
He said that that sounded reasonable. And.
Counselor, has that got to clarity you want?
That's, you're right for me, and I apologize, I'm just.
And beyond that, we, unless. Beyond that, unless you tell me otherwise, we will follow our standard building permit timeline for evidence of activity in twelve month, any twelve month period. And completion down to as-built in a twenty-four month period from the time the permits are issued. But that, I mean, that's a standard in the ordinance. So if you want something less than two years, you tell me.
Well, I don't think we all just expedite this thing. I mean, hey, somebody may have to burn some bit, and I could offer, but.
It really needs to come to.
You could say that it has to be implemented in, I think, twelve, twelve months would be reasonable to get as-built, construction and as-built, not anything.
Why would the, is the implementation a different thing than what we were wanting to initially vote? That what we're wanting to initially vote is the timeline for submitting those five points you talked about. Once that is completed, then can we not come back and give a deadline for completion?
They would not have to come back, would they, at that point?
No, it would follow the permit process, unless you give me a different timeline, it would follow the permit process.
So that's a separate motion?
No, I, I, how about this? What if, what if you require the first three points, which is the stamped approved plans, the pre-con, and the permitting? the pre-con, and the permitting, within, uh, six months, and construction and as-built within twelve?
If I can put that in, how's that sound? The words, like you did, that's my motion. Say it again. If I can say it again. Three points, and, uh, and I want the, the construction to be done by twelve months.
Well, construction will be, construction will be, and as-built, construction will be complete and as-built will be done within a twelve month period.
That's correct.
The first three points being.
We have a motion for, so it's the position staff recommendation. Within six months, they have to have an approved, uh, stamp signed for them, they have to have a pre-con, permits in hand, and the construction would be completed twelve months from the date.
So a year and a half, am I hearing?
No.
No.
Just an additional six years.
Yeah, twelve months total. That's what it, that's the motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second.
Who made the discussion? Thompson, who made second?
What discussion?
Mr. Turner.
Discussion. So it's not.
We got to go there. If it's not, ladies and gentlemen, jump back to the floor.
Point of order.
We'll go with our, our.
That's what I thought you said.
Also, no point of order, we can interpret beginning construction as a guy with a shovel out there digging a ditch. That's not what I consider part of this process.
Well, that's not part of the.
That's not part of the motion, just for clarity.
They have to be completed in twelve months.
This drainage is fixed.
And then, the only other thing would be, some kind of, that you might want to consider is, and this gets in the church's business a little bit, but, uh, this is subject to them not having additional structures and improvements made to the property that are not a part of this site plan.
That needs to be a part of.
That needs to be a part of the motion. Uh, and if they, if they want to do that, they got to come in for revision.
Somebody needs to write this down, write this down.
You want, you want to say?
Let me get one more. We have a motion to approve the site plan. And before, uh, within six months, they have to have an approved site plan, stamped, they have to have a pre-con meeting, and permits in hand. And part of this motion will mean that no additional work or buildings or anything else, nothing else will be happening on your site, unless it's approved by the state first. And that, uh, within a year's time, uh, work has to be completed and that has to be submitted.
I'm, you're fine. My problem is not, it's not what you're saying, it's that you've got to get it structured more, to clearly understand this. You're supposed to clearly understand this motion. You've got it all down, but just, I just, Tom or somebody kind of write it up a little bit, that's not sure you're, you're standing there.
Legal counsel, they here should know what's going on here.
Mr. Russo, could you quote that back what I just said?
Oh, gosh.
If that's not, I, I had it written here.
If you would, please.
It don't matter what y'all say, it's what you voted on, and you made your motion, and it's certain. Every time you reopen it, you just wind it out.
That's right. Right now, we have a motion and a second to approve. We had the outset we put in there. All of them in favor, vote aye. And those opposed.
I don't think it included the last statement, which is no buildings on it, or was that part of the?
I'm sorry?
What, what is it?
That may complete within twelve months.
But does that include no buildings on the property?
No additional.
No additional.
That motion is in. That aren't reflected in this site. Without, without reconsidering.
Then I vote aye.
That motion will carry next. Thank you.
Thank you.